Call the meeting to order.
Coffee?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McKinley?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a presentation tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, Pam? Come on, please.
Where would you like me to stand at?
Uh, anywhere by the...
Okay. I'm Ben Smith, I'm a partner at Strigle Navlock Accounting Firm. Our firm performed the city's audit this year. I want to thank Sue and Sandy and Ruth for their assistance in helping us complete the audit. And I'll just give a quick overview of the financial statements. If you want to look at your financial statements, if you go to about the fourth page of the It's the independent auditor's report. Um, I'll just briefly go over what's in the report. The second paragraph is the management's responsibility for the financial statements. This just says that management is responsible for the preparation for a presentation of financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So the city's financial statements, um, we helped the city prepare them, but they are the city's financial statements, not Strigle Navlock's financial statements. The next paragraph says what the auditor's responsibilities are, and basically our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements. Based on our audit, we conducted the audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also with government auditing standards. The following paragraph sort of describes what an audit entails. And then the bottom paragraph on this page talks about the opinion, and so this is what you're paying for us, is to give an opinion on the financial statements. And it's an unmodified opinion, so, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position, the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of the city as of April 30th, 2017." So this is a clean opinion, this is what you're after in an audit. So it's basically saying that the financial statements represent what they say they do. So moving on, about three more pages, the page seven. This is the statement of net position of the city. This is essentially the balance sheet of the city as a whole. And I'll just highlight a couple of things on here. Um, if you look at the top right, you'll notice that the city as of April 30th had $6,254,000 of cash. This was an increase over the prior year of $414,000. The next thing I wanted to highlight would be near the bottom two-thirds of the page, in the notes payable and bonds payable section. If you add those four numbers together, that's $1,661,000 of debt that the city had as of April 30th. This is a decrease of $153,000, so there's net debt, so you paid principal down of $153,000 during the year. The next item I wanted to show would be the deferred outflow of resources combined with IMRF pension liabilities and the deferred inflows related to pension obligations. So there's three different numbers here, one's an asset and two are liability accounts. If you add those three numbers together, the 273-124, the 127-7534, and the 2107-1, if you see those. The combination of these three numbers are the city's net pension liabilities at the end of the fiscal year. These numbers are compiled by the IMRF, and it's just due to actuarial valuations based on the number of employees you have, the projected benefits that they'll receive retirement, plus what you've paid in. So this is what the, as of that point in time, what the city could expect to add in future liabilities to cover their pensions. Any questions so far? So, moving on to page 10. This is the second page of the statement of activity, so page nine and 10 are actually one statement. If you could put them side by side, there would be a better picture of what is on the statement. But anyway, so on the bottom of page 10, the row of numbers third from the bottom is the change in net position. So you'll see that the city as a whole had a, essentially a loss of $37,584 during the year. This is compared to a prior year decrease in net position of $123,888... Oh, yeah. Excuse me. No, actually, $420,000 last year. So $420,000 of loss in 2016 compared to $37,000 of loss in 2017. So that's an improvement of $383,346. And the vast...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Where does that come from? I mean, where, why you're such a...
So the two things that... So you'll notice your cash increased by $414,000, but you had a small loss of $37,000. So a lot of that... You want to know why? Was your question why it improved so much from the prior year?
Yes.
Uh, I can get back to you on that. Off the top, I didn't write, like, unless I get that before I came.
Okay.
But I thought your question might be how your cash improved by $414,000 compared to actually having a small loss. And that's due to, one, the pension liability increase during the year, so that's just an actuarial calculation. And I'm assuming that plays a big part of that increase. That actuarial liability increased a lot more two years ago than it did last year because the market increased paramount during that time. So that helps improve certain future liabilities are. And then also the other part of it is depreciation. You had roughly $700,000 of depreciation during the year, so that's a non-cash item there, but I can get back...
Yeah, you have to understand, this isn't just general revenue, you know, operating day-to-day. This includes, you know, everything, so that, you know, whether it's our TIF spending, whether it's, you know, our infrastructure, our capital assets. So you have to look at it as the big picture, not just the general fund. The general fund actually closed down in the black. So this covers everything.
And then this is the city as a whole, you group everything together, and it doesn't necessarily reflect, like, your cash position, your ability to cover your...
Yeah, I understand that.
So I can get back to you on what made up that improvement.
Okay.
Um, I'll get your contact information soon, I can email you that. So that's all I wanted to talk about on that page. And so those are your government-wide financial statements. If you go to the next page, that's page 11, and these are your governmental fund financial statements here. This is the, these are the statements that the city would be more used to looking at in their budgeting process and just their overall evaluation of what's going on with the city. So the first part is the balance sheet, and then the next page is a reconciliation that gets you from the government-wide governmental fund balance sheet to the fund financial statements. And that gives a description of what some of the differences are caused by.
The, it says note five, that's the cash equivalent, note five is property. What, is that, is there notes back in here that we refer back to then?
Yes, yes. So we'll get the, we'll get the notes. So page 13 then is essentially the income statement, or the statement of revenues, kind of, changes in fund balance of the governmental funds. And you'll notice that the governmental funds had a net change in fund balance of $86,175. So all the governmental funds had basically net income of $86,175. And this compared to a prior year total of $149,718, so not quite as good as last year in the governmental funds. But in looking at last year, I'm pretty sure that there was a small amount of debt that was issued during the prior year, so I think that accounted for some of that higher total in 2016. Moving on to page 15, this is the statement of net position of proprietary funds, so these are your water, sewer, and your electric and light funds. And page 17 is the income statement portion of this. And you'll see that in the change in net position, combined between the three funds, you only had an increase of $13,0913, and in two of the funds, you actually were running deficits. So the electric fund makes up some of the shortfall in the other two funds, but you'll see that that's sort of a weakness, that from a cash standpoint, you're not hurting too bad. A lot of that loss is from depreciation. However, in order to fund future capital improvements to the infrastructure for the utilities, you might need to improve that total.
That's what I've been talking about, is that we're running a deficit in water and sewer, and why we're going to have to look at our rates because of all the capital improvements we're going to have to do, and that's what he's referring to here.
So if you look at, if you looked at two years ago, or not two years ago, this 2016, the loss was $297,000, so you actually were $310,000 ahead of 2016, so that's slight improvement. And I could go back and look to see what caused that improvement, although I don't remember off the top of my head, but... Page 18 is the statement of cash flows. And this gives you another idea of sort of the weakness in some of the funds, because this isn't counting depreciation. So you'll see that in the water fund, there was a negative $12,285 in negative cash flow during the year. This is, some of the reason for this is you did have capital outlays of $44,000, but even with that being the case, taking out capital outlays, you would only have about $30,000 of positive cash flow, so...
The $44,000 capital is...
Not very much, yeah. So that's a weakness. However, in the electric fund, you do have decent cash flow, so that's, that's your strongest proprietary fund. So those are the basic financial statements of the city. If you go another page or two back, these are the notes to the financial statements. So you had a question earlier. You'll see the references on the balance sheet and from statements. That will refer back to these notes. These notes provide more detail for what's on those statements. The first note just talks about your general accounting policies. There's notes on your debt summarizing each of your bonds and notes payable. There's a note related to your capital assets, both your acquisition of capital assets, the appreciation, and any disposals, and then how depreciation is allocated for different activities. That'd be note three. Note four is the long-term debt note. Note seven is the IMRF note, and this comes straight from IMRF. They create this note for you, but this provides all the actuarial assumptions that are used to come up with that net liability that the city has. So, you know, that $1 million and some odd dollars seems like a pretty large amount, that's not unusual for any municipality. I mean, that's, that's, the fine pension plans as a whole are usually going to have pretty big liabilities.
We're also actually in better shape, because all of our employees are IMRF, because if we had downstate police pension, it would be a lot more difficult. But because we are IMRF, and IMRF is better funded, it's, yes, we're always on the liability side, but it's better than the downstate police pension.
So those are really big things I wanted to highlight. You'll see a budget actual for your major governmental funds. You'll see a combining statement for your non-major funds further back, and then a few statistical pages. That would be the totality of your financial statements. Moving on to the city's internal control report. I wanted to highlight, one thing from last year was, there was an issue with your bank reconciliations, not reconciling for your general ledger. We noted this year that that was not the case. We didn't run into any problems with your cash, so that was a good thing that was corrected over the course of the year. The few items that we highlighted this year are not new items, they're just items that we didn't highlight in the past, just for a number of reasons, but in talking with Sue, who said that was best actually to highlight these. The first one is segregation of duties, which is a common internal control weakness of all small municipalities. We, you want to read through, I can read through all of it. "We noticed significant deficiencies within the segregation duties due to the limited number of people working for the city. Many of the critical duties are combined and assigned to the available employees. Presently, individuals collecting cash have the ability to make adjustments to pest or utility costs. We recommend that a member of the management, such as city manager or council member, review adjustments made to the accounting system for any unapproved adjustments and unusual activity and will resolve any such items and document. His or her approval by initiating and issuing the documents. And also, individuals reconciling the bank statements have access to cash collections and have the ability to adjust accounting software. We recommend that a member of management, such as the city manager or council member, review the bank reconciliations for any unusual activity and will resolve any such items. His or her approval by initiating the documents. To the extent possible, duties should be segregated and served as a check and balance and maintained in best control system possible." So Sue will come up with responses for the city to try to mitigate some of these situations. Another item we noted was the control of your cash disbursements. "While testing the cash disbursement process, we noted a lack of detailed controls in the approval process. Currently, individuals who are approving payments and signing checks are not agreeing payments to supporting documentation. Individuals approving the monthly payments and the individuals who sign the check should agree that the payee and payment details on the check agrees with the amount listed on the invoices or supporting documentation. These individuals should document his or her approval by initiating the documents when approving and or signing cash disbursements." So I think with this, so this...
Are we saying that we're not checking when we...
So, when, so you...
Let me answer my question.
Okay.
Question. We're not checking when we go through this bill listing and everything, and we have the checks and everything, we are not checking back to make sure everything matches to the bill listing, to fit into the...
So, in talking with my staff, I think the issue was the person signing the check isn't always matching it. So even though the council might be checking it to provide another check, when checks get signed, it's always a good idea for the sign to also match it.
To make sure to check those off and sure that, yeah.
Right. So that's all I was saying.
Because I've been through this.
So that's all I had to go over, so if anybody had any questions, have you tried to answer them, or I can get back to you on any questions you might have?
The, uh... The two things, at this point, he's ready to start saying, you're going to screen that out.
Yes, actually, I was the one that asked him to do this report, because I knew when you have a short number of staff, there are the lack of segregation of duties, and I wanted those laid out, so I knew exactly how to create the procedures to address those things. So I kind of knew they already existed, but to get it delineated so that then we can, you know, come up with better procedures. Now, some of it we may not be able to address, because we can't hire another person. You know, I'm sure the auditor would agree that usually what I've seen is cities will say, "We agree with you, we're doing the best we can, but we don't have the resources to hire more staff."
So that's generally what we come across, and that's why we don't always mention...
But it can also help, yeah, maybe tweak some things...
And it's getting her support with...
Just do double checks, yeah.
It's supporting her to, help her to create as many changes as possible, improve the controls.
Well, I've been through this before with the checking, because I was in the mayor role position about 25 years ago, and I would check after we had an employee steal money from us. And after that happened, then I made sure that we checked everything, because they weren't, you know, I was signing the checks. I was personally signing checks, now I take a rubber stamp and roll them across there. I personally signed the checks and everything. But then it came to the point where I started checking off against the bill listing and making sure that nothing of this was ever happening again, and that's why I'm asking that, you know, I don't, we, I don't know how you do it now, but it's not my place as a council member to get involved in that, to not, to that degree.
So Sue's on it, and she's going to come up with...
That's true, she will, there's no problem with that. Corrected.
Anybody got any questions? Scott? No, I don't have any questions. All right, thank you, Ellen. Okay, thank you. If Sue has, like, non-actual information, if you would come up with questions, feel free to contact me.
Thank you very much.
We have three public comments tonight. Excuse me. Paul Lamb, take the call, please.
Sorry, I missed the last meeting. Looked like a good one. This looks to me like it's going to be your last opportunity to jump off of this garbage with Area, because you're going to have to approve it tonight, I assume, is what's going to happen. Is that correct?
No, it's already been approved.
It's already been approved. Hmm. I must have got it all wrong. Anyway, so there's a lot of people out there that are pretty upset about it, which you people probably know by now, anyway. One issue is, uh, I've got a couple of friends that have got several different houses, but they don't have anybody in. Now, will they have to pay garbage for each one of those houses, even though there's not garbage at those locations? Do you know? Because you're going by meters, aren't you, more or less?
No, it's not meter.
It's not something meters.
We are working on creating a provision for temporary cessation of service for, like, snowbirds, but that would be limited to about three to six, you know, three to six months, depending on the situation, and then we'd have to be, we can't do it for the whole city, if that makes sense, so it may maybe have to be a set amount of people...
Yeah.
Or a set number of months. And I think it depends on the situation, because it was mostly for snowbirds, not for just houses sitting vacant, but it makes sense that you don't, you know, if it's vacant, you're not going to have garbage, so...
Yeah.
I'm sure that there's something that could, you know, we could look at.
Okay.
On a temporary...
So, does each individual more or less going to have to come and speak with you in regards to that, to try to get it worked out, or is it going to be a flat, like, no, this is the way it's going to be if you're not a snowbird, then you're going to end up paying on those other houses?
I think some of this is still kind of a gray area that we're going to negotiate with Area. I don't know if you'll work with Area, or if you'll work with us. I would think that it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Are these rental properties? Or are we not? No? No.
Do they have, like, running water? I mean, do they pay in quarters, sewer stuff, that the house is there, or no?
Yeah, yeah, they still have that, so...
Okay.
I was just assuming he's going to go on the, the utility bills and stuff.
And it's going to be on the utility bill, but just a line item, just a set amount every month. It'll be another line item on the bill.
So it's just wondering if they're just going to have to pay for each bill that they get from the different areas, you know, the different houses?
Well, they do. I mean, you are, but again, I'm sure that, depending on the situation, we could do a temporary stop.
So those people are going to end up paying quite a bit more than just one individual. See what I'm saying?
Well, the thing of it is, you got to meter each of these houses. They're getting built for water and sewer and electricity right now.
Which is...
So it's no different than that. They're not using that either, you know? But like I said, there's probably a gray area, something's going to be worked out, but it's the same thing. It's a utility.
I don't understand why they're sitting vacant. I mean, why are they being sold, or leased, or...
Because they want to, and you don't want nobody in them. Okay, so is Knight still going to be able to come in town and do garbage runs, or no?
Only for... For commercial. For commercial and multifamily.
So if I decide that I want them to stay with me...
For single-family residential, no. They will not have a license to do that in the city.
Okay. So I'll have to take it outside of the city, is what you're saying. Your, your, the way it's set up, Paul, seems to me you're going to be paying for garbage service whether you use it or not. So you might as well use Area. Well, maybe I don't want to. I understand that.
There's a few of us that don't.
Because you people have really disgusted, a lot of us, from what you guys are doing, and what you have done. And you hang your head all you want, but elections are coming up again, and I guarantee you, it's going to be new people. That's for sure. So you didn't do the right thing this time. So Ben, you can shove that down our throats, let's start getting busy and get these streets back up to where they ought to be. Quit spending all your money on this strickling stuff. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Paul. Alice Gumm.
I'm not helping garbage, Sean. Maple Street project. I guess what I'd like to know is if I have to fill out that Freedom of Information report, or who's got the information. I was not coming to the meeting before, I don't know what the budget amount was, I don't know where we're at on the budget. I mean, if it's $400,000 was budgeted, or we had $200,000, we spent on it. And the projection for the completion dates, because we're going to go into the third summer next year, and we're not done with it.
I talked to Cruz today. They plan to be out there again next week. They've just got a few more homes to hook up to sewer. I asked them specifically about Jill Reynolds' home, and they said, "Well, if it gets to the point, they'll just go down there and just do that one thing. It'll be an extra cost," but I told them, I said, "I promised her that I would have that done before the snow flies," and so they're going to, you know, get out there starting in here next week.
But we're going to be in the next summer to get this all put back together.
It's possible.
Well, I know we are, because they can't report with concrete, or do my sons drive until next spring, because everything's got to settle. And Franklin Street, that section there by Western, I mean, it needs more gravel to put there, it's caving in again. It's a mess. But I don't know, so do I have to fill out a form to find out what was budgeted and where we're at on the budget cost, and...
I don't, what is your specific question? Why are you asking?
Okay, what was budgeted for that project? Was it $400,000? Was it $200,000? How does anybody know?
I don't have it memorized. I don't have it memorized. I, just call me tomorrow. I mean, it's not that difficult.
Okay, and where we're at on the cost and what we're still projecting, because like I said, I know the street's over there, there's still a lot of money that I'd be spending putting stuff back together. And, like you said, I know we're going to be in next summer, that's going to be the third summer.
Well, we may not even fix it next summer, and the reason I say that is because we're going to redo a number of streets over there, and we don't know which ones those are going to be, and that may include Maple. So that may be torn up for the next two years. I don't know, because we're going to redo the infrastructure, we're going to redo the streets, we're looking at potential curb, sidewalk, over on Washington, water, Maple, that whole area, and that hasn't been decided yet. We're getting it engineered right now, and so whether we're within budget, over budget, it's not, I don't want to say it's not relevant, but...
Yes, it is.
No, it's not, because that will probably run into two fiscal years, and then, so whatever's budgeted this year, whether we're over or not, we just will add it to the next fiscal year, or to this new project. So there's a lot of moving parts... So there's a lot of moving parts here, and unfortunately, I understand the frustration, but that whole area is either going to be under construction or being worked on, at least probably for another full season.
So what you're saying is, when it was initially budgeted, or there's, I'm using $400,000, because I really don't know, okay? I'm just using a figure, okay? And say we're at $250,000, next year we could be using another $250,000 or whatever.
No, that's not what works. Let's just say, let's pretend that it's $400,000, and we spent $250,000. That means that we didn't spend $150,000.
That's correct.
So then that means we're over.
Right, yeah, I understand that, I understand both.
So then you could budget a whole nother $400,000 for next fiscal year and still be under budget. So it just depends on how things are budgeted and how the fiscal years carry over and what we're doing over there, because now, we're talking about enclosing that within a larger project, and doing the whole road, and doing the rest of it.
And finishing people's drives and stuff like that, it's not...
In the driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't want to spend money to Band-Aid it. You know, we've done that.
Oh, don't worry, you're not a Band-Aider there, because I'll be back up here. And I do understand...
It's been Band-Aided for the last 70 years, it's worse than done.
Oh, so's our sidewalks, and I've been ignored and stuff, yeah, yeah. But this patching here and patching there is ridiculous, I do agree with that.
It's been Band-Aided, that's a, that's a, that end of town, years ago, it was nothing but Center Street, it was nothing but Center Street, and one individual lived on that street, took care of a lot of those things that were down, all the stuff was put underneath the ground, really, the city didn't have much to do with it, I don't think, from what I understand from the past.
Well, they didn't even know where some of the sewer, we know that, their lines were, and that's why they'd take out a section of concrete there.
Because the fellow named Hales is the one who did all this down there, he owned the property down there where your son lives, that back there, and he's the one who did a lot of things down there, and that was, it gets very developed until about the mid, about mid to late 60s.
Yeah, it's, like I said, sewer's working, we just, he just has a big chunk out of concrete up that they can't do until next spring, because the ground needs to settle, because if you pour it now, it's going to sink in, and you're going to be redoing it, or I'll be up there yelling. And the driveway, I mean, they did red rock in there because we were getting stuck, I went over there and...
That's going to be an ongoing, you're just going to have to let the crews know. The project was $55,000 for this fiscal year, and so far, we spent $20,000.
I know that it won't do that much, though, that gives me a little bit of idea.
So, again, so I've already told crews that they need to do what they said they were going to do, hopefully, they'll do that within the next week to 10 days, but this is going to be an ongoing thing through next summer, probably.
Like you said, Franklin Street, that's actually...
The goal is to make it a really nice street. The goal is to address the flooding, to maybe make curb a gutter, to attach it to storm sewer, to have sidewalks, and this is just the first project, I hope, of money, but it's not going to be resolved.
Well, they need to put some more gravel on Franklin, because it is sinking again where they put the sewer line. And, but it's still dangerous in the wintertime, because that street, and like you said, it needs to be redone, the whole thing, because it cramps. I mean, you fill the hole up there where it's sinking, so you're not, you don't have this cave-in, but that street there is, when it's slick, I mean, it's, I have, I almost slid into the people's car, I came that close, and I was getting my foot on the gas pedal, because it's so raised there. That needs to be spread out.
All our streets are crammed.
Yeah.
And that's our goal, is to continue to work on these streets and get them cleaned up, make them new.
Okay, so that packed, okay, so I'll be watching that ordinance. Okay, what, I didn't put this on there, so you don't have to ask, you can. Ordinances, have ordinance numbers and stuff, if you want to look up something, where do you go find the ordinance online? We have all this other stuff, you can't see no ordinances online, and see what the legal...
They're on the city page.
I can't find them, can't get in them, and I'm not the first one who said that.
Can you go to the library and look at the ordinances or no? Well, there's a book, we are still in the process of updating it, I don't know if there's a book at the library. Even though there would be. Yeah, there should be.
But there's not a website?
No, that costs money, upwards of thousands of dollars a year, depending on who you subscribe with. I have suggested to our staff that we should have that, because it makes everybody's life easier, but whether or not we'll be able to afford it is the question, but that will be added to the budget discussions for next year. So right now, it's either the book or through the city clerk.
Those can't be scanned into, if you've got a book, you can't scan those into your web...
Well, you might be able to, I don't...
Then you put some of those on, I think.
I think you can.
Correct.
I think you can be.
Yeah, I was going to say, having the time, I mean, you'd have to have, you know, you don't have the time right now, but if you're looking for a specific ordinance, if there's a book...
Well, you know, I know what order you want to look at, if you've got a question about something, question, because you don't know how to search for it.
But you could also come to City Hall and sit here, and we'll give you a book.
If you know the topic, then City Hall can help you find the ordinance.
Right.
But I, like I said, I know something about computers, I just thought they could be scanned, and you set it up to scan to it, but that somebody's happened to key it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Elizabeth Holtz.
Just came to let you know if you have any other questions about Heritage Jays, and just here just in case, but otherwise, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Section 1, the consent agenda.
Please, consent agenda.
Second it.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Motion carried. Section 2, unfinished business. I don't think we have any ordinance or resolutions at the table. Section 3, there'll be new business.
Make a motion to ordinance 992, authorize the execution of an IMLRMA, minimum and maximum contribution agreement.
This is just for our insurance, we do this every year, so we're coming down on the dumb line, so we'll be good about tonight, but...
I don't have any questions tonight.
I don't, I don't have anything. Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion, approve Resolution 2017-46, place on file the 2016-2017 audit.
Any discussion?
I don't have any.
Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion, approve Resolution 2017-47, approving a farm lease for the city-owned property on Depot Road.
Is there any discussion?
I don't have a second. I'll second it.
Discussion.
This has been farmed by Jerry for a number of years, and he is retiring, and has requested that he be able to get, Marty has requested that he be able to continue farming it, and so we didn't have anything in writing, so I just had this simple lease drawn up, just to protect both of us.
I had a question, because you brought this to me, and there was some incorrect wording, did you get that corrected?
Yes, I did talk to him, it was actually under number nine, he was concerned about if he had crops already in the ground, and we had a buyer or wanted to do something with it. This then allows him time to get it out of there.
That's, that's what I was thinking. Any further questions?
Call it.
Testory?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section 4, city manager's report.
Just a couple things, it'll be, you know, just one thing, just so you know, I am working on, there's been some comments and concerns about code enforcement, I think the police department's doing a really good job, we're going to start doing some PR, some before and after of the ones that we've already addressed, we're also looking at the top 10 worst properties list, and asking the public to participate, you know, whether they agree with it, or to make additions, basically, or to try to keep that as an ongoing, you know, they need to try and encourage people to clean up or maintain their property, so we're on the cusp of rolling that out, I'm hoping sometime in December. Other than that, we're just getting ready for whatever the tax levy in December and the calendar for next year. And speaking of which, do we want to only have one year in December, or meet on the 4th, on the date you took?
The only thing about the 4th is, there is a school program and everything, and I, if it is a bit of a conflict or anything, maybe for the next night, Tuesday night.
Yeah, you can reschedule or cancel.
I would reschedule, so.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, let's just move Tuesday night.
So, move 4th to 5th?
Yes, December 5th.
Okay, seven p.m., so at the same time?
I think we need a motion, second to do that.
Don't move.
Second it.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Testory?
I don't know that we're going to have, I don't have that much, so, getting closer, we can discuss.
Okay, very, that's fine, great.
This is, as I said, about the only thing that I have for December is a calendar and a tax levy.
Anything else, let me see.
I don't know.
Non-agenda items, we have one here. Governor Rauner sent us a letter and a flag. On the 3rd, 2018, the people of Illinois will celebrate our state's 200th birthday to kick off our 365-day celebration. I hope all of you will host the Illinois Bicentennial Flag-Raising Ceremonies in your communities on Monday, December 4th at noon. We'll be doing that up here, correct? If you'd like to attend, please do.
I have another thing about, you know, Jane.
Go ahead.
In the manner in which we're paid and everything, I had to ask Sandy when I got on here about four years ago, about just taking a check once a year versus a check a month, and she says, "You can't do that, because the organization can't do that." Well, I like to, if we want to amend the ordinance to say that you can have the option to do whatever, but once you do, you pick the options you want to do, whether you pay annually at the end of the year, or every month, you have to stick with that option for that year, for that time period. Is that, can you do that, Joe?
I, I think we could, I would, I think we need to put in there something about proration, obviously, if someone hasn't served the full year, they're not entitled to the full year.
Right, and she would keep track of whether we attend or not, does that bother you?
I was going to say, isn't that not per, yeah, but per meeting?
Yeah, per meeting.
So, yeah, I would think that at the end of the year, it would be dependent upon the meetings you attended.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
Anybody have any concerns with that? No?
No.
We could put together a draft.
Okay.
And look at it.
Sure, yeah. Take a look, see.
Do you want, do you want two options, like, one for annual or monthly?
Yes, and to give the, whoever's on here, give them the choice.
Stop, do you have something?
I want, there's a letter from the Houghton Forest, thanking the city for their participation in it, I don't know if you want to read the whole thing. The point of it is, as you may or may not know, our committee is extremely small, we cannot do everything, we'd like to do it on our own, it's tremendously reassuring to know that we can count on the support of the community to help us grow in that way, allows us to give to our community as you have given to us. Thank you on our committee's small behalf, on behalf of a much larger and continually expanding group of citizens, of the surrounding communities, who came together to celebrate the second annual pharmacy Houghton Forest, truly appreciate your support. It was a good event, made a lot of turnout on Saturday, it was about a two-hour wait for the whole, for the whole process, I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday, the weather was a little bit inclement, it was down a little bit, but when the weather didn't, didn't go away, it picked up, and we had a good night. So the committee had a, had a really good time, and we appreciate your support.
If there's anybody out there that's not been to, that's really neat, should have attended.
Anybody wants to get involved with it?
Who should they contact? You?
Should contact, no, not me. Laura Schweitzer is the Treasurer, Pharmacy Houghton Forest Committee, my wife is, is on the committee, Krista Hibbert is on the committee, yeah, there's, there's a Facebook webpage for contacting people.